Good evening and welcome to the Villar Westmont official voting board meeting for October 18th, 2010. I'd like to ask our clerk to please take the roll call.
Mayor Ron?
Here.
The clerk's here. Trustee Emery is absent. Trustee Fleming?
Here.
Trustee Forsley?
Here.
Trustee Klebeneau?
Here.
Trustee Scott?
Here.
Trustee Seneca?
Here.
Manager Searle?
Here.
Attorney Zemanek?
Here.
Police Chief Mulhern?
Here.
Economic Development Director and Assistant Manager Kimball?
Here.
Budget Analyst Parker?
Here.
Administrative Assistant from Economics Development Peterson?
Here.
Administrative Assistant from Economic Development Rimkus?
Here.
Village Planner Malik?
Here.
Engineer Nicole?
Here.
And Code Enforcement Sinisak?
Here.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. First item are the minutes of the committee, the whole meeting held September 30th and board meeting held October 4th. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve, Seneca.
Second, Scott.
Discussion? Roll call.
Trustee Seneca?
Yes.
Trustee Forsley?
Yes.
Trustee Scott?
Yes.
Trustee Fleming?
Yes.
Trustee Klebeneau?
Yes.
Okay. Reports, Mayor, I've got a few things. I would like to start out by asking Fred Kimball to come forward with a representative from the Westmont Auto Mile who was dressed appropriately for the season, Fred tells me. They have a short presentation for us on the Westmont Auto Mile. Fred?
Thank you, Your Honor. Members of the village board may be aware, and we'd like to kind of give a little brief introduction for the viewing audience that may not be familiar with the concept of the Westmont Auto Mile. This is a unique public-private partnership that the village of Westmont is proud to be a funding participant of, along with several of the individual auto dealerships in the village of Westmont. It's no secret that we believe that our world-class auto dealership cluster on Ogden Avenue is an important economic engine for the community. And indeed, in a good year, auto sales will generate sales tax to fund village coffers and village services, to plow the snow, to make sure that when the water turns on, clean, weakened water comes out of the tap, and that police officers patrol the streets and that firefighters are paid so that they can put out fires and make you feel safe and secure in your homes. The Westmont Auto Mile dealerships will generate approximately three to three and a half million dollars per year in auto sales tax revenue for the benefit of the village of Westmont. We think this is indeed significant. And we've therefore entered into a funding partnership with these dealerships for a twofold purpose. The first purpose is to help them sell more cars and become even more successful businesses. Because when they sell more cars, that means more sales tax is generated for public benefit here in the great village of Westmont. We think that's a very important thing. But the auto dealerships have also understood some of the financial stresses that the village of Westmont has encountered in light of the economic downturn. And through their funding collaboration with the village of Westmont, part of the funds of the Westmont Auto Mile group will also go to support important community activities and events, such as holidays, Taste of Westmont, and the Fourth of July. If it weren't for the funding provided by the Westmont Auto Mile dealerships, we don't think we would have had a Fourth of July celebration of the kind and caliber that we've become accustomed to in the village of Westmont. So I don't know if we can turn on the overhead or not. First, I'd like to, before introducing one of our member dealer representatives, this is a depiction of the Westmont Auto Mile website that has been created for this group. And you'll notice here that each one of the participating dealers, McGrath Accura of Westmont, Laurel Audi in Westmont, Laurel BMW of Westmont, McGrath Lexus, Ogden Lincoln Mercury, Mercedes Benz of Westmont, and Oak Brook Toyota in Westmont, these are the dealerships that are participating in this activity. And they will be contributing money for the benefit of this joint purpose. And we're very pleased to have one of the representatives with us tonight here from Laurel Audi in Westmont, Mr. Ozzy Halim, the general manager. So we've asked Ozzy to come up and make some comments about the Westmont Auto Mile and about his Westmont Audi dealership specifically.
Good evening, everyone. Actually, I guess I'll just touch on an opportunity like this for us as a dealership. It's making me really appreciate having a way to support the village and support our business and try to keep, I think the most important thing is trying to keep our business local and keeping the local customer in our area and keeping the revenues coming through that way. As far as Audi itself is concerned, we're under a renovation, as you all know, and the, you know, we've added about 4,000 square feet to the dealership, but it's all for the customer, the convenience, their comfort. You know, and we have probably one of the most fascinating product lines ever with Audi's a 100-year-old product and worldwide has sold a million cars last year. But its popularity in the United States is just on the rise. It was the only import high group that grew last year during this tough economic climate we experienced. But we've got good clients, good clientele. We've been around since November of 95, part of the Laurel Automotive Group. And as far as the product line expanding, it's becoming a little bit more affordable, especially when other makes are raising their prices on their vehicles. We find our customer retention is growing. That's really what's most important to us when we're selling our vehicles, isn't so much making the sale and just moving on. It's the service after the sale that we're proud of, that we provide our clients. For example, our customer satisfaction index with Audi itself for the last two years has been number one in Illinois amongst all the Audi stores. And that's the key to growing any business, is getting your customers to come back. So we take great pride in taking care of our people, getting referrals, and obviously just growing our business naturally. So, but thanks for your time this evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Excellent.
Thank you. Did you have anything further? Over the weekend, I had an opportunity to meet one of the architects that works for Walgreens. And you've got the new picture of the Walgreens that's going to come as being built in Westmont. And according to what he told me, that is, that is the state-of-the-art new design that Walgreens came up with for Westmont that's different than any other designs that they've used so far. So they're, they are going to be having people come in from other parts of the country once this store is completed to look at the design of this particular building. So we're very happy with the fact that it's going to be a new model, a new design for Walgreens. And we're also very hopeful that it'll be a very positive addition to our sales tax revenue here in the village. And we have to extend the thanks to the staff for working with them to make the changes that we felt were important to make it fit into that prominent location here in the village. Thank you. Next, I'd like to call Larry Forsberg up if he could give us a little more information on the Trick or Treat Trail, which is coming up this coming weekend.
Thank you, Mayor Ron. Village Board members, yes, this is the weekend, this weekend, on Saturday, October 23rd, we will have our annual Trick or Treat Trail. The hours for Trick or Treat are from 11:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. We're expecting, depending upon the weather, somewhere between 500 to 700 Trick or Treaters this year. So we'll be Trick or Treating from Chicago, yeah, Neighborhood Avenue in the north to Dale Center South and Quincy and Burlington Streets bearing off Cass Avenue downtown. So want to encourage all the families to come out, get dressed up in your favorite Halloween costumes, and have a great time because we have over 30 merchants that will be handing out treats and also offering special offers. I'd also like to say thank you to our police department, to EMA, our Public Works Department, our Chief of Police will be out there along with McGruff, the crime dog, for photo opportunities. So come out and get your picture taken this weekend. Thank you. Look forward to seeing everybody.
Thank you, Larry. Next, I would like to announce that the novel, the new Novel Experience, the new bookstore at Eight and a Half North Cass is just opened. Janet Archball was in front of us several times. And the ribbon cutting for that new business will be tomorrow, Tuesday, at 5:30 at Eight and a Half North Cass for those who'd be interested in attending that ribbon cutting. Then the last thing I wanted to mention is one of our staff members here at, here at Village Hall got married this weekend, Jan and John Zibley. And a number of us attended and have come to the conclusion it was one of the nicest wedding ceremonies that we had ever attended. It was extremely personalized and couldn't have been a better setting for the two of them to get married. So my congratulations, our congratulations to them, and best wishes in their, their new marriage together. Thank you. And that's all that I have right now. Next, our village clerk.
The only thing I have is to add a very happy birthday to you this week. Oh, that's right.
Thank you very much.
Have a nice birthday.
Thank you. Next, our village attorney, John Zemanek.
I have nothing tonight.
Rand Searle, village manager.
Thank you. I wanted to announce that on October 25th, we're going to have a special Administration Finance Committee meeting at 7:30 to talk about the upcoming tax levy hearing. We also have a regular Admin and Finance Committee meeting scheduled for November 1st, and that will also be the subject of that particular meeting. So I wanted to make sure that was announced. Then the next thing is I just want to introduce Fred Kimball, our Economic Development Director and Assistant Village Manager. His department is going to continue the department presentations this evening. The next two presentations will be by the police department on November 1st, and then we'll finish up with Administration, Finance, Clerks, and IT combined on the 15th. So I'll introduce Fred and I'll let him give his presentation.
Thank you very much. And it gives the Economic Development Department great pleasure to present to the mayor and trustees tonight an overview of our department, the Westmont Economic Development Department. The Economic Development Department is a part of the service business known as the village of Westmont. We provide service to residents, developers, brokers, and business owners. We believe in the mantra that the customer is not an interruption of our business, he is the purpose of it. We provide service through a number of programs, activities, and regulatory functions. We're a relatively small department compared to many of our sister departments throughout the village, with six full-time and one-part-time staff members. They are Shannon Malik, Assistant Director and Village Planner, Kim Nichol, our Village Planning Engineer, Vicky Sinisak, our Building and Code Official, Jill Peterson, Administrative Assistant III, Karen Remkus, Administrative Assistant II, Jim Farley is our Part-Time Code Enforcement Official, and I serve as the Assistant Village Manager and Economic Development Director. The department was formed in 2004 with the merger of the former Building and Zoning Department with the Economic Development Department and two members of the former Engineering Department. Due to economic conditions over the past several years, the original staff of nine full-time employees and one part-time has been reduced to six full-time and one part-time employees. Now, we're going to do something a little bit different than some of the earlier presentations that you've seen because we believe, as a wise man once said, that if you want to know what kind of shovel you should buy for your company, you should ask the person in your organization who digs ditches for you. So therefore, to explain some of the key services provided by the Economic Development Department, the staff person with primary responsibilities in that specific area will address the board. Our first speaker tonight will be Shannon Malik, the Assistant Director and Village Planner.
Thank you, Fred. Good evening, village board members. I'm Shannon Malik, and as Village Planner and Assistant Economic Development Director, I act as a liaison to our Planning and Zoning Commission and the Downtown Westmont Business Alliance. I also help coordinate the comprehensive plan rewrite process and the public participation that's necessary as a component of that. On a kind of day-to-day basis, I review zoning applications for compliance with the zoning ordinance and with the comprehensive plan, and generally will provide comments to developers, petitioners, and staff analysis to the commission. Part of the zoning responsibilities include managing the variance process, rezoning, special use permits, site plan approvals, sign ordinances, subdivisions, parking requirements. I also provide building permit and sign permit zoning review and building code compliance review or bulk regulation review. Sign permit field inspections so that we can go ahead and release the money to the permatee, and site visits for data collection. Another aspect of what I'm involved in is that the clerk's office will forward business licenses for review to ensure that they meet the zoning ordinance regulations. So I will review those and sign off on them so that the business license can be issued. I also maintain historical records of Planning and Zoning Commission files, respond to Freedom of Information Act requests for zoning-related inquiries. And I'm also active in the American Planning Association's Chicago Metro Section events, which are typically held on a monthly basis. As you're also aware, I did achieve the American Institute of Certified Planner certification. We find that that's been beneficial in terms of ensuring that we're on sort of the forefront of information, best management practices, and can be sure to provide the public with the best service. Another point that I wanted to mention is that I do participate in a lot of the Chicago Metropolitan Agency for Planning meetings so that the village of Westmont's concerns can be known when it comes time for regional planning initiatives. I've also been involved in the RFQ and RFP, Request for Proposals process for the parking study for the TIF consultant, and of course, for the comprehensive plan, as well as some grant writing applications. And just another day-to-day activity would be initiating and following up on developer leads and economic development that could come to the village of Westmont. Another day-to-day activity would be screening development inquiries in order to provide the developers with guidance on how to apply for their zoning process or entitlements. So that would be pre-application meetings for the zoning approval. Also would ensure that all public notice requirements are met so that the statutory laws of the state of Illinois are upheld. Then, from time to time, I've created survey instruments and provided research support for various petitions. And then, of course, all of the research and information that goes before Planning and Zoning Commission is ultimately forwarded onto the village board to aid in your consideration of the requests.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much, Shannon. Next, we would like to hear from our Planning Engineer, Kim Nichol, who is the Professional Engineer Certification as well.
Thank you very much, Fred. See, as part of my job, I review site improvement plans and calculations and perform stormwater inspections for new construction to ensure that minimum engineering and village standards are met to promote the health, safety, and welfare of permit applicants, as well as the neighboring properties. In particular, I review permit semitels for potential drainage issues. Since the Building and Zoning Department merged, I perform stormwater reviews in conjunction with the village's engineering consultants. Since I was named the village's Stormwater Administrator for the DuPage County Stormwater Ordinance in the spring, I've been performing single-family residence reviews and reviews for projects such as Manor Care and Mercedes Edition independently. For other projects such as Walgreens and Westmont Market, I have been performing my engineering review prior to the engineering consultant's review, and I'm working toward performing more of these reviews independently also. Some of the things I look at during these reviews are storm sewer capacity calculations, soil capacity calculations, grate capacity calculations, lot coverage, proposed grading, detention calculations, floodplain and wetland determinations. I also ensure that village ordinance requirements are complied with, any additional village board review requirements are complied with, and that other permits such as I.D., D.E.C., and sanitary districts are, that they know which ones are required. To help address complaints from neighbors regarding drainage issues adjacent to single-family residence tear downs, I worked on developing a new minimum standard swale cross-section. This generally entailed lowering the top of foundational elevation for the new house and deepening the side swales in order to reduce the proximity of the surface water runoff from the neighboring properties. Swale calculations are required when there is offsite tributary area to a site. I perform reviews for plaits of annexation, subdivision, easement, dedication, and vacation. I also review utility permits, right-of-way excavation permits, parking lot permits, storm sewer permits, and driveway permits. To assist the permit applicant, I worked on adding all engineering documents required for permits and inspections to the village website. Some of the engineering inspections I perform are storm sewer, detention, curb and gutters, silt fence, right-of-way restoration, parking lots, and as-built grading. I perform as-built drawing reviews. This is the review of as-built elevations of storm sewers, detention, and grading to check, among other things, that the required detention volume is met, the required free board is met, in order that the detention overflows during a 100-year storm at the location that it was designed to, the as-built grading follows the proved site improvement plans. Besides my final inspections, I coordinate final water division, parkway tree landscape, and public work department inspections. Let's see. I also review initial letters of credit. I make final calls prior to letter of credit expiration dates, ensuring that letter of credits amendments are received. I process letter of credit reductions to ensure that there is enough money to complete the project if the developer defaults on the completion of the project. I process letter of credit draw paperwork and draw at the bank if necessary. I give deadlines to the developers to finish old projects, such as Rose Hill Estates, Wyndham Hill 1, 3, and 5, and Quincy Street Station, among many others. Other inspections I perform are driveway, private, and public sidewalk and patio inspections. I also make draft revisions to approximately 10 village maps annually. Among these maps are zoning address, fire district, police district maps, and plot copies of these maps of varying sizes to be distributed to village departments and neighboring communities. Thank you.
Thank you, Kim. Our next presenter will be our Building and Code Official, Vicky Sinisak.
Good evening. As Fred said, my name is Vicky Sinisak. I'm the Code Enforcement Officer for the village of Westmont. My main goal is to protect and maintain the health, safety, and welfare of the general public of Westmont, preserve and protect property values, and help in reducing crime by abating property maintenance issues. I work in cooperation with a problem-oriented policing detective of the Westmont Police Department to assist in achieving these goals through the following programs. I administer and implement the property maintenance and nuisance codes and ordinances by taking complaints, inspecting, following up, and ensuring abatement, even if it means issuing citations and going to court. I administer and implement the multi-family licensing program, including the application process, scheduling, and performing inspections, following up, and ensuring that these buildings are in compliance with property maintenance codes and standards. These programs are tracked by my inputting individual information on all the cases in a software program called WebQA. I prepare monthly reports to keep the trustees and public up to date on my activity and progress. I prepare a monthly report to keep the trustees and public up to date and also attend and make reports at various village committee meetings. As part of working as a team in our department, I now perform building permit plan reviews, approved permits, and perform inspections on limited residential projects, such as detached accessory structures, fences, decks, roofs, and the like. Most importantly, having knowledge in many certifications in building codes, inspections, and floodplain, I am available to answer daily questions from the public and developers when they have property maintenance, building code, or other general code inspection or questions. I also give general educational presentations to various organizations regarding all of my duties and responsibilities. Thank you.
The village board may recognize some familiar situations from the photos at the end of Vicky's comments there. Our next presenter is our Administrative Assistant III, Jill Peterson. In terms of longevity of service, Jill is the most senior member of our department. Jill?
Hello. I was told not to ad lib, so I am reading right from my sheet. I've worked for the village for over 23 years, about 10 years in the water department and the last 13 years in the building division. I was born and raised in Westmont. I still live in Westmont. I raised my son in Westmont. Obviously, I like Westmont a lot. As part of the service we provide to the general public and developers, we issue building, electric, plumbing, and sign permits. These are both residential and commercial, from new construction to additions, alterations, garages, sheds, decks, pools, fences, et cetera. Permits are logged in when submitted and are tracked until they are ready to be issued. We also track cash bonds that are submitted with the permit fees. Also, as part of the service, we register all the contractors that are listed on the permit applications and require them to submit a bond from their insurance company. These records are kept in the MSI Permit Tracking Module, which is where permits are entered into. To provide information to elected officials, other departments, and the general public regarding development activities in our village, we prepare a monthly construction and permit report that is distributed and also sent to FW Dodge and the Census Bureau on a monthly basis. We also coordinate inspections for the homeowners and contractors. That is distributed daily to our consultants, Don Morris Architects, the Plumbing Inspector of the Fire Department, and in-house to ensure projects are completed in accordance with village code, thereby protecting the owners. We also respond to FOIA requests in the designated timeframe when applicable to the Building Department files and records in accordance with state law. I also supply building support services, not just over the phone, but to walk-in homeowners and developers that come to our service counter on a daily basis. I'm currently a member of the Village Hall Safety Committee, and I'm also currently a member of the Health and Wellness Committee.
Next, Karen Remkus, our Administrative Assistant II, who works in Engineering Support Services. We'll discuss some of the services and programs that she's involved in.
Good evening. I'm Karen Remkus. I've been with the village for 17 years. I handle the Engineering Support Services, and the following are some of the duties that I do. I take in new site development permit applications for commercial and residential projects. I check to see everything has been completely completed properly and all items are included. I log and track the projects and send them to our consultant engineers when necessary. I aid residents in filling out applications for all permits. I help process permits for driveways, sidewalks, patios, right-of-way excavations, and parking lot paving projects. I enter them into our MSI computer system and use, issue them. I help with the counter services in answering questions and taking complaints from residents and also taking requests for inspections and, from contractors and residents, and answering floodplain questions. I give clerical support services. I prepare agendas and post them to the village website calendar for the Code Enforcement Committee and the Planning and Zoning Committee. I distribute the village maps and process plaits of survey and record drawings. I track bonds and letters of credit. I send out reminder letters for the letters of credit so they are renewed and help to release the bonds. I am the Economic Development Committee Secretary and prepare the agenda and the minutes. I represent our department at the Executive Safety Committee meeting, and I fill in for the Building Division as needed. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you all very much. And I think the staff has done an excellent job in giving an overview of some of the regulatory programs that we're involved in. Now, we're going to take a little bit different turn and talk a little bit about some of the economic development activities in which our department is involved and the services that we provide. We are in charge of new business attraction to the village of Westmont. We maintain a working relationship with a network of private developers and brokers through affiliation and membership with various industry organizations such as the International Council of Shopping Centers, Choose DuPage, the Illinois Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity. We are, in fact, the first point of contact usually with interested brokers and developers, and it's important that we have a good working knowledge of the inventory of buildings and properties that we have available in our community so that we can match those with the developers' needs and desires. We do existing business retention and expansion. We work, like to work, we get a big kick out of working with our existing businesses and helping them to grow and prosper. It's a lot easier to help an existing business grow and create more jobs and public revenues than it is to attract a new business to the community. And we also like the fact that it's good to work with that business that has been a part of our economic development community for many years here by virtue of their previous operation in our town. We serve as the Chamber of Commerce liaison to the village board. I also serve as the Westmont Auto Mile kind of ceremonial chair of that organization and work with the Economic Development Committee. We believe that our Economic Development Committee serves a very valuable function for proposed projects and developers in our community by serving as a sounding board for those developers to say, come to this Economic Development Committee, which represents a broad cross-section of our community. The mayor sits on that body, the village manager, the fire chief, myself, and five or six citizens at large. So that if the developer has a new project in mind or a new type of business, we can run that by the Economic Development Committee to kind of get an idea how receptive the community community will be to that business concept before they spend a lot of expensive dollars on architectural renderings, engineering drawings, and site plans and so forth. We also provide, as Shannon has mentioned, a great deal of support to the planning and zoning commission. We serve on the Illinois Municipal League and the DuPage Mayors and Managers Conference state legislative committees. We think it's very important to participate at those levels to help foster legislation which is beneficial to municipalities and to oppose legislation which is detrimental to municipalities. We serve as the liaison to the building and zoning and code enforcement committees of the board and administer the downtown development grant program. So this just gives you an overview. I think you can see nobody in the economic development department will ever say that they get bored. We offer a myriad of services and programs to the residents, developers, brokers, business people of the Village of Westmont. We're very proud of what we do, and we believe very strongly that we are in the service business. Thank you for the opportunity to present this overview, and we would be happy to respond to any questions that the mayor and trustees may have.
Questions, comments from board members?
A great job.
Busy.
It's amazing what you accomplished in your department. Thank you.
Thank all of you for giving up your time to come out this evening and help Fred with his presentation this evening.
These are some very hard-wrecking people. Thank you.
I was going to say, if you drive up and down Ogden Avenue from Lyle to, let's say, 294, seems like our town's the only one that's really doing anything on Ogden with the dealerships and proposed businesses coming in. So it's nice to see as many projects we have being worked on now.
Yes, and we think you've made a very interesting observation, trustee Scott. We think that in the next several months, the streetscape along Ogden Avenue is undergoing a dramatic transformation with some of the new projects that you see. The mayor mentioned the Walgreens project, the Audi Westmont renovation, the old Baker Square building, just in the last forty-eight hours is undergoing a remarkable transformation for Laurel BMW of Westmont there on Ogden Avenue. And we're very excited about the prospect of the new Westmont Market Grocery Store at 331 Ogden Avenue, East Ogden Avenue there and the assemblage of properties that they're looking at. So all in all, we think this is a testament to the Village of Westmont, the attractive location, the strategic business location that we occupy, and also the fact that we believe that we do have a good reputation with brokers, developers, and business people in the greater Chicago metropolitan area. They know that this is a good friendly place in which to do business.
I can chime in. The one comment that I repeatedly hear at planning and zoning commission meetings is developers and their attorneys and architects saying how great it is to work with staff and how easy the process is, and you hear it over and over again at those meetings. So I think it's a good compliment to all of you.
If there is ever a time when there is somebody from the community that has questions as to what is going on in economic development, or if they have suggestions that they might like to give to the village regarding economic development in any particular area, they would be more than welcome to come in, contact you in the economic development area, and we're ready, willing, and able to listen to any comments that any of the business people or residents might have regarding economic development and some other changes that we could potentially make to make the village more economically attractive to new business.
We welcome that input, Your Honor.
Anything further from board members?
No. Great job. Thank you. Thank you for all you do.
Thank you. Moving right along, first, next item, waiver request 324 North Richmond. Board to consider an ordinance approving the following request: A, waiver of public sidewalk requirement for additions over one hundred and fifty square feet; and B, waive cash in lieu payment for sidewalk installation.
Motion to approve A, Fleming.
Second, Scott.
Discussion, point A.
Those are in a single ordinance. We can actually take A and B together unless you want to break them into separate votes.
Well, I think we need to talk about B.
Okay.
Okay, we have a motion on point A. Do we have a second on point A? Discussion, point A.
Yeah, did we want to discuss that part because it's one hundred and fifty square feet right now? I would prefer not to do both sides, the Naperville and the Richmond, but I do think they have to pay at least part of it. So I'm thinking maybe the more private end, the Richmond Street, how long, whatever the width is of that, if the other board members agree. They are a corner lot. I think Naperville being a more traffic would be eligible at some point. I'm sure we were going to be doing sidewalks on there, so I don't mind if we took, you know, and deleted the Naperville portion, but the Richmond portion, I think they still have to be responsible for part of their fees.
I can agree with that.
Yeah, I think that's good.
We just don't know what the square footage is.
That's a nice compromise.
Yeah, and I don't know what the square footage is. That's why I thought, you know, I don't know if it's half or any idea. Oh, he's not even here. Any idea? Half of the, if we just had Richmond, do you have any idea length with how we can correct that, or should we just let the attorney worry about?
I don't know how it splits. I think it's probably something like 125 or so by 102 or approximately, but I only have the total of 227 in front of me this evening. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm...
It says additions over, okay, I'm sorry, the addition over twelve is fifty is the square footage of the home.
Are you asking for the width of the sidewalk along each front edge?
Not the width, but I just want to know, should, do we need to say just Richmond Street if that's all we're doing?
Yeah. So that would be 121 approximately.
What was the Naperville approximately?
Naperville is about 105.
Oh, so it's... It's close. Pretty close. It's close. So it's almost half of what you would have to spend then.
Yeah, I'm okay with it.
Yeah, I think that's a nice compromise. I'm fine with that.
So if we did that, waive cash in lieu of payment for sidewalk, then we wouldn't want B, would we?
No, B would have to go away.
So we're only gonna, so you'd want us to say no, then on B, I guess, is how we're going to have to do it.
But if we take it as two, then by doing this, we wouldn't even, B wouldn't even exist then because...
Right, well, you can vote B down since you've taken, broken them up. And just, so the minutes are clear that A will read they need to pay cash in lieu of for the Naperville side only. Is that correct?
Richmond.
Richmond.
The Richmond side only, okay.
Okay, and then that way, then the waiver of the cash, then we'd just turn it down on B then, is how, okay. So we're still just on A then?
Mm-hmm. Okay. Yeah, that's good. That makes sense.
Okay, does everyone understands how A is going to read?
Mm-hmm.
With that being said, we have a motion and a second. There's nothing further on point A. Roll call. Trustee Fleming.
Yes.
Trustee Scott.
Yes.
Trustee Forsley.
Yes.
Trustee Seneca.
Yes.
Trustee Clevino.
Yes.
Okay. Then B, waive cash in lieu payment for sidewalk installation.
Motion to approve, Fleming.
Second, Scott.
Discussion on point B. Roll call. Trustee Fleming.
No.
Trustee Clevino.
No.
Trustee Seneca.
No.
Trustee Forsley.
No.
Trustee Scott.
No.
Okay, thank you. Next item, downtown development grant 37 West Quincy. Board to consider an ordinance approving a downtown development grant request from Mr. Greg Kozowski for the property of 37 West Quincy.
Motion to approve, Scott.
Second, Forsley.
Discussion? Roll call. Trustee Scott.
Yes.
Trustee Forsley.
Yes.
Trustee Seneca.
Yes.
Trustee Clevino.
Yes.
Trustee Fleming.
Yes.
Next item, the force reads as follows. Westmont Market Grocery, 317 to 331 East Ogden. Board to consider a motion to postpone a storm sewer connection cost participation request from the Westmont Market Grocery Developers, West Highland Capital Partners, until the November 11th, 2010 Committee, the whole meeting.
Motion to approve, Clevino.
Second, Forsley.
Discussion? Roll call. Trustee Clevino.
Yes.
Trustee Fleming.
Yes.
Trustee Scott.
Yes.
Trustee Forsley.
Yes.
Trustee Seneca.
Yes.
Okay. 2010 Westmont Holiday Days. Board to consider an ordinance approving the following requests from the Westmont Holidays Committee. A, permit amplified sound in downtown Westmont Business District near Westmont Center on November 26, 5:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. for holiday days opening ceremony. B, close the first block of West Quincy Street, November 26, 2:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. for holiday days opening ceremony. C, close section of Cass Avenue from Trobee to 55th Street, November 26, 6:15 to 8:00 p.m. for Frosty and Friends Night Parade. And D, close sections of several streets between Burlington Avenue and Trobee west of Cass Avenue, November 27, 7:00 a.m. to 10:00 a.m. for the holidays 5K family run walk. Motion to approve as a block A through D, Seneca.
Second, Scott.
Discussion? Roll call. Trustee Seneca.
Yes.
Trustee Clevino.
Yes.
Trustee Fleming.
Yes.
Trustee Scott.
Yes.
Trustee Forsley.
Yes.
Energy savings grants. Police Department Board to consider an ordinance authorizing the execution of following grant agreements to retrofit certain lamp fixtures in the Westmont Police Department. A, an energy efficiency and conservation block grant in the amount of $18,776, and B, a Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity grant in the amount of $8,064. We have a motion on both of these items.
Motion to approve, Scott. Second, Fleming.
Discussion?
Is there any portion that we have to pay? Were these 100%? I'm trying to remember what they, when they talked about. I didn't get the feeling they were 100%.
I recall it's a reimbursable grant.
Right.
But we're going to be reimbursed 100% or was it less?
No, it's 100% based on these cost figures, and actually, the original was, it was almost $25,000. And with the adjustment we made, it was $18,776, but it's 100%. But it's, we have to pay it upfront, and then they reimburse us the money.
I understand the pain. I just want to make sure because some of our grants are not totally 100%, and I just didn't know if we had this budgeted where we could afford it. So that's okay then. Thank you.
Any other comments? Roll call. Trustee Scott.
Yes.
Trustee Forsley.
Yes.
Trustee Seneca.
Yes.
Trustee Fleming.
Yes.
Trustee Clevino.
Yes.
Next item, request for proposals for tax increment financing, TIF. Board to consider a motion authorizing the release of a request for proposals for tax increment financing consulting services in the C1 Commercial Business District/South Westmont Business District.
Motion to approve, Fleming.
Second, Forsley.
Discussion? Hearing no discussion, roll call, please. Trustee Fleming.
Yes.
Trustee Clevino.
Yes.
Trustee Seneca.
Yes.
Trustee Fleming.
I'm sorry, Forsley.
Yes.
Trustee Scott.
You can vote twice.
I guess. Chicago.
Nope.
Anybody out there want to vote?
I think she wants to vote. Thank you. Next item, surplus property. Board to consider an ordinance reauthorizing the sale of certain surplus property of the village on the new DuPage Mayors and Managers auction date of November 13 rather than September 25, 2010. So moved, Seneca.
Second, Forsley.
Discussion? Roll call. Trustee Seneca.
Yes.
Trustee Clevino.
Yes.
Trustee Fleming.
Yes.
Trustee Scott.
Yes.
Trustee Forsley.
Yes.
Amended Employee Assistance Program. Board to consider approval of an ordinance authorizing execution of an amended Employee Assistance Program, the EAP, with Elmhurst Memorial Hospital.
Motion to approve, Scott.
Second, Forsley.
Discussion?
Mayor, I wanted to point out that we are going to make one more change to the agreement based on a question that trustee Seneca had to clarify. The hours that the provider provides services, it gives some specific dates, days of the week and times. The question was about how they provide phone, telephone service, and that remains at 24/7. So we're going to add a statement to that effect in the agreement. So I just wanted to note that.
Thank you for getting those answers, Ryan. Any other comments? Roll call, please. Trustee Scott.
Yes.
Trustee Forsley.
Yes.
Trustee Seneca.
Yes.
Trustee Clevino.
Yes.
Trustee Fleming.
Yes.
Next item, charitable solicitations. Board to consider motion approving two charitable solicitation requests as follows. A, Westmont Wildcat Football and Cheer fundraiser, permission to sell candy bars at the Westmont Train Depot and Jewel Osko at Ogden and Cass on October 11, 7:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. October 16, 8:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. October 23, 8:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. And permission to solicit funds via Shake the Can at 63rd and Cass and Ogden and Cass on November 27 and 28, 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. With December 4th and 5th, 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. as rain dates. And B is for the solicitation for the Disabled American Veterans, permission to solicit funds at Cass and Ogden, November 11, 13, and 14, 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. We have a motion on A.
So moved? Clevino?
Second, Scott.
Discussion on A. Hearing no discussion, roll call. Trustee Clevino.
Yes.
Trustee Fleming.
Yes.
Trustee Scott.
Yes.
Trustee Forsley.
Yes.
Trustee Seneca.
Yes.
Point B.
So moved, Scott.
Second, Clevino.
Discussion? Roll call. Trustee Scott.
Yes.
Trustee Forsley.
Yes.
Trustee Seneca.
Yes.
Trustee Clevino.
Yes.
Trustee Fleming.
Yes.
Acting Village Treasurer. Board to consider motion appointing village manager Ron Searle as acting village treasurer to perform the statutory prescribed duties of treasurer during the absence of the village's finance director.
Motion to approve, Forsley.
Second, Seneca. Discussion? Roll call. Trustee Forsley.
Yes.
Trustee Seneca.
Yes.
Trustee Fleming.
Yes.
Trustee Scott.
Yes.
Trustee Clevino.
Yes.
Trustee Fleming. Next item, personnel actions. Board to consider motion authorizing the following personnel-related actions. A, lifting the temporary hiring freeze for the purpose of filling a recently vacated street division position with a part-time employee; and B, waiving the advertising requirement of the personnel code in order to hire a former employee as a public works department maintenance worker.
Motion to approve A, Forsley.
Second, Scott.
Discussion on point A. Hearing no discussion, roll call. Trustee Forsley.
Yes.
Trustee Scott.
Yes.
Trustee Fleming.
Yes.
Trustee Clevino.
Yes.
Point B, waiving the advertising requirement of the personnel code in order to hire a former employee as a Public Works Department Maintenance worker.
So move, Seneca.
Second, Forsley.
Discussion, roll call.
Trustee Seneca?
Yes.